I will now open the Estacada City Council. If you'll please join me in the
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with God indivisible, with which we shall govern.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councillor Blevins.
Here.
Councillor Dolezal.
Here.
Councillor McElroy.
Here.
Councillor Metcalf.
Here.
Councillor Prokop.
Here.
Councillor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkland.
Here. Thank you very much for that. Jerry, you will not.
I'd like to move that we extend our thirty-minute citizen and community group comment section to take as long as we need to get all these comments in because we do have a lot of comments tonight. There's a lot of people in the room and their voices need to be heard. So I move to extend our thirty-minute comment, citizen and community group comment section to as much time as we need.
Okay.
I second.
Yeah, but first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you for that. Okay.
Can I make one quick comment? So I don't anticipate that there to actually be a tornado, but since there is a warning, if you're not required to stay here if the, if it starts to feel like we're at a risk, but I would also say you do not, you don't have to leave. Think going down into the hallways away from the windows would probably be the best course of action or taking cover under something. And hopefully that's not going to happen, but I just wanted to say that in case we need to move quickly, you're not required to stay, but you're also not required to leave if you feel safer in the building.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, we are now at citizen and community group comment.
On that one. Corbin Stanton.
Corbin Stanton. All right, Corbin, step up there, my friend.
Hey, can you guys hear me all right?
You sure can.
Cool. So I'm just a local high school student and I just wanted to come out tonight. I'm a youth. I've been in the high school a lot and I just wanted to voice my support for the DEI. I've served on a lot of boards and a lot of the times it's really hard for me to see a board doing bad. It's really hard to get volunteers. And if we have them that are willing, then I don't understand why we would get rid of them. And I'm a youth, so I just wanted to come out and show my support.
Corbin is also the youth liaison to the downtown Estacada Commission.
Way to go, Corbin.
Thank you.
Hey. Dan Toos? Already.
Hi, my name's Dan Toos. I'm the vice chair of Clackamas County Republicans. I'm also alternate chair of Congressional District Five. I'm just here tonight representing my son and daughter and granddaughter to speak out against DEI. Asking you please not to go backwards in time. DEI is being eliminated all across the country. We don't, we don't need to hire helicopter pilots by what by their diversity, their color, sexual preference, any of those kind of things. Please just hire people on their merit and their abilities. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hey, Holly Cook.
Good evening. I am from Oregon City, but I also serve on the Clackamas County Republicans as the House Captain. And I am here to oppose DEI. I think there is no reason for it. In two thousand seven and two thousand eight, I studied under a trans man and I had no idea he was trans until somebody told me later. He never asked for special rights. He never screamed or made a fuss about anything. He was completely secretive about it. He represented himself totally professionally. And we are spending millions to create division, to push these horrific pronouns when if you're really meant to be a trans, you will do it with dignity and respect and you will not ask anyone to bend over backwards for you. We are spending thousands, if not millions, to push this ideology that is, was a mental illness until about two thousand sixteen, when they took it out of the insurance billing records because the hospitals capitalize a million dollars per trans. So when the truth is prevailed, people act out. And I've got a sixteen-year-old son. He is a biological male. And, you know, he's like, Mom, I can't even meet girls because there are none. And I mean, what, every man in this room, every man in this room who's got a child should put themselves in these footsteps. We do not need to chemically castrate. We do not need to give gender blockers. We do not need to do this to children when their science, their brains are not developed till age twenty-four. And you can see the temper tantrums because people can't hold the truth. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's disruptive. Can we?
I, outside, we're going to continue on.
All right. All right, next, we have Shirley Burke.
Okay. How about this? Anyway, I had a whole, I had a whole speech going tonight, but listening to what was going on on here tonight, as far as bullying in the schools. I think I am one of the oldest residents in this room tonight. There might be two or three people that's been in this town longer than me. I've been in and out of this town since sixty-six. I've watched it go up. I've watched it go down. I watched bullying. I watched, we had two African-American kids in school in sixty-eight. I sat there and I watched these kids being bullied. And then, and I have a neighbor's granddaughter in seventy, eighty-two, that started a no bullying club because they were bullying a couple of African-American kids and Asian kids. So don't tell me there's no bullying in this, in the school system period. Okay, I think this group would, this group has done a lot, even though they don't come out and brag about it. I've listened to other people in town talk about them and how they helped them with the kids in the schools. And the women and the kids in this school are the ones that's going to be most affected by what's going on. I am ashamed if it, Estacada, this is not Estacada. This, and like Sean said, this is not Portland. And this sure as hell ain't Washington DC. Thank you.
Hey, Tammy Beatty? Beatty, sorry. Getting old.
Hi, again. So as you know, I'm the DEIC Chair. I'm not condoning this behavior. I, this bothers me. This is not who we are in our committee. So I hope you can forgive whoever's outside because that is not okay. I am also a Republican and a very staunch conservative. I'm a woman and I'm strong. I'm farm owner outside of the city. I would like you to answer the two questions that I had during the workshop that I don't feel ever really got answered. Would the committee be willing to do that for me?
Well, this isn't a committee.
Well, sorry, the council.
Yeah, at this point, we can't really, because we're trying to get all the, the, the questions answered tonight in this community comment section. There's another citizen and community group comment towards the inside of it, but I don't know. Would that be something we could do at that point?
Well, could we, could we answer the questions during council business under the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee Direction?
Or not from the audience. Have to be.
But she asked.
Well, if I ask the questions, could you do that later?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Okay, so the questions, if you want to write them down. First off was, why are you wanting to shut down our committee? I think some of you said it. Some of you really didn't. You kind of skirted my question. And then the second question was, why can we not keep the committee as it is now with a new name? So I have heard a lot tonight about the fact that you all really don't like the DEI piece. You don't like what it stands for. You don't like what it means. You don't, it just, everything around it you don't like. We have tried to change our name. We have not been allowed to do that because of the grant funds. So it comes back, John, to the money piece. So there's much we could do for this city. I don't remember which one it was that said, what could we be doing? We could be doing, as I said, my husband and I lead free dental clinics. We also have free vision clinics. We are currently having one October, excuse me, April five or six. And we are having people from Estacada that we're helping, that are part of our patient load. They will have appointments. So we can do this as a committee. We could be doing this kind of stuff for our community every year. I know how to do it. I lead it. So I would like to see, I would like you to reformulate this committee in how you, you would like it to be, but not to get rid of it, if you'd consider that, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Robert Corrales.
Just speaking on the reformulating, that was one of the first things I wanted to talk about. So what comes to my mind, what would work better and seems to work for most other places that are successful is equality, fairness and meritocracy, workforce based on performance. And I'll let you do what you want to do with that. The next thing on my mind, just wanted to touch on Heidi's comment about, we're not about division. But I applied to be part of this DEI last year and I was denied because of my social media presence and my beliefs. So that's not inclusive and that's not equitable. That's the very opposite of what this group claims to be. So that's where that is. And then finally, what I wanted to bring up was something Jerry had commented to me on Facebook years ago. I used to do flag waves out here, trying to build up the American spirit, American flags. That's all. Just trying to let people know that it's okay to still have an American flag hanging out off your front porch or whatever. So I get this from Jerry and I want this to be on the record. So when it comes time to vote, we can get rid of people like Jerry and get actual people in here that the town deserves, deserves better. And here's Jerry's comment. I know I'm just helping your exposure, but what the hell's wrong with you? Even the people that might agree with you on some level are avoiding your posts. How many days are you going to spend by yourself waving your flag before you realize you don't have a following? How many unanswered posts before you realize you are virtually alone? You are delusional if you think people are buying into your garbage. Robert, there is help for you. If you need to talk, there are mental health providers that can and will help you. And well, I mean, at the end of the day, what I was doing out there, building up the American spirit, guess who won the election? And guess who's on the chopping block right now? So that's, I think, about all that I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have Vicky Belikosa.
I just want to say you learn an awful lot when you come to the meetings and watch them online like I usually do. First, I want to say I believe you said, Robert, that that was directed at Jerry. Interesting, Robert. I don't know if you know who I am, but five years ago you replaced my garage door. The person that you were then is not at all the person you are now. And I would agree one hundred percent with Jerry's comment. You need some help or just need somebody to talk to? Yeah, I'll talk to you. It might kill me to do it, but I'll do it. I wanted to come before the council today. Because sometimes things are not easy to say. I don't necessarily support whatever is going on outside. Just like everything, we might not all support the whole entire entity that is DEI. After all, there's good teachers and not so much good teachers. There's good daycare providers and not such good daycare providers, so on and so on. But I'm actually legally deaf. I wear two hearing aids and I was born this way. I shouldn't talk like this, but I do. I should talk like Mary Matlin, the actress. I'm a little nervous, but what I want to know is, it's because of things like DEI that you guys have those microphones now. You didn't use to have those. I don't know exactly when they came into play. But Sadie probably knows because she's been here the longest, I believe. I didn't come to anything until we were having some problems with the business next door to us years ago. Because, well, when I did come, I had no clue what was going on. We didn't have them being televised like this. We didn't have closed captioning. We didn't have any of that. But did you know that that's part of DEI? So being somewhat sarcastic, but completely serious. If you guys do get rid of this, I think that means you're going to have to get rid of these microphones. Because they were probably brought in by DEI. And if you do, because we would not want to be including everybody. I guarantee you, I am not the only deaf slash hard-of-hearing person in this community. Just look behind me because there's a lot of old people here. And there's a few old people up here too. But I'd like to have those microphones. My daycare kids will love them.
Thanks, thank you. Julie Battle.
Oh, you got a shorty up here. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I got, I got a whole lot to say. I usually do. First of all, I'd like to ask Mr. McElroy. You asked the DEI five things they've done in the last six months. And then you followed up by saying the Estacada DEI is divisive. So I would like you to name five thing, five things that Estacada DEI has done in the last six months that has created this divisive nature. The other thing someone mentioned was there's not much work being done. But I believe you've been given a spreadsheet or a graph that shows the work that the local DEI, and I'm going to say local all the time in Estacada because there's far too many people in this room that have screwed up what's happening in Washington and all over the country. That is not what Estacada DEI is all about. And by the way, we don't hire helicopter pilots. But someone said there's not much work being done. And you've been given information to the contrary. But I also know, I signed up to be on the DEI committee about six weeks ago. Never heard anything. At that time, I questioned, you know, why this was. And the reason given was that you were debating the one-year residency. I've been here almost four years. You also said you were going to table the discussion on that for your goal-setting meeting. I went back to the minutes. It was not brought up. You did not talk about it. That's why people don't trust you. You make promises to us and we sit out here and we can't ask questions. Well, we can ask questions, but you're not allowed to answer us. So you've ignored, maybe a lot of work is not getting done because you have not seen fit to vote in, probably, you know, we've got a list of three to five, maybe even more people that want to be on this committee. The other thing, you know, I got a lot on my mind, but I, I'm on the civics. What is it called? The civics academy. And our last meeting was interesting and it was, I have enjoyed it so much. I've been meeting great people and learning all about new things. But I had a real come-to-Jesus moment. We went for a walk. And, and we always do a little activity. And this one was to look at the murals and they gave us a great, I didn't even know it existed, nice four-color brochure that had all of the murals on it. And I was kind of by myself looking and listening and reading and I went back to that pamphlet when I got home. Can I finish my thought? And I saw African-American people being portrayed on some. I saw Asian people being portrayed. I saw Native American. I saw Celtic. And I thought, I just had this come to Jesus that, is that who we are? Or are we this? Are we this? And to quote my bumpa, who's now gone to glory, he would say, if we are the second, where we put all this stuff for everybody to see, but we don't uphold it, then all we are is perfume on a pig.
Hey, Vincent Bellamont.
How's it going? All you accomplish by dissolving DEI will be hurting your own constituents and further eroding public trust with this council. This decision will not be based on the merit of the committee. You are simply towing a party line. But this is not a fight between conservatives and liberals because I don't think conservative is an apt description of the government right now. A better description would be arsonist. These are people who don't know how to build anything. They merely know how to set our government institutions ablaze. And they will not stop until every social safety net and government guardrail is but ashes in their wake. Defanging government agencies like the EPA that are meant to protect us from companies that will inevitably pollute our water, air and land, slashing IRS workforce. So we no longer go after rich tax cheats and cutting veteran benefits to the VA and so many others. All this will accomplish is the further hollowing out of the middle class in America. And the middle class in your constituents will suffer greatly because of it. They are burning our biggest trading partners with tariffs. They're abandoning our allies, foreign and domestic. And this will only lead to the weakening of the United States on an international stage and make us a pariah of the rest of the world. This is why I don't actually believe you or this government are conservatives. They're arsonists. You pretend to be the watchdog of the city, but really you're a fear monger. You pretend to have family values, but really you're a developer shill. And, and Sean, you pretend to care about every Estacadian, but really you only care about keeping your title as mayor instead of actually standing up and protecting the city and the people you purport to care about. And here's a free civics lesson for everyone listening. If you vote for a clown, expect a circus. Good luck, America. You're going to need it.
James Heeb.
Good evening, everybody. My name is James Heeb, former state representative and a stakeholder in the local community. There's a lot of things that have been going through my mind that I've, you know, tried to figure out what I was going to use my three minutes for and not what I was thinking earlier. Ultimately, for the DEI, what it comes down to me is some of these at the very high level are the globalist agenda, a UN Agenda 2030 and their goals. But the diversity, equity and inclusion that is a global goal, and we are seeing the effects of it here in our community. The same with some of my, my close friends that we had the debate about, I, I completely value Black Lives Matter, black people, black people, of course their lives matter. It's the Black Lives Matter Global Network Foundation that was started and has raised billions of dollars that is not achieving their goal of, you know, stopping racism. They are sowing division within our society. We look at the definition of equity. Yeah, it's the, the, the same end. It's not how you get there. The equity is the ends that they are focused upon and not the equality opportunity. Somebody works hard. In a meritocratic society, they should be able to reap those rewards of their hard work. We are a very diverse society here in America and that is one of our biggest strengths. We are very inclusive. We make sure that everybody on every level is taken care of as an American. We do this. My problem is that it's, whichever group it may be, they are using these to put us into our own little boxes and point out how different we are and use that to sow division amongst us. Goes back to those, the global goals of equity. The equity which here locally is a great thing, but whenever they talk about worldwide equity, they talk about bringing down American standards of living to equal the standard of living of other, other nations. I don't believe that there should be any redistribution, redistribution of our wealth in any way, shape or form, but we should promote those that want to work hard and want that opportunity. I a hundred percent agree with a lot of the anti-bullying that the committee has brought up. I, Narcan, somebody brought up the Narcan issue. I was the only chief Republican sponsor on House Bill twenty-three ninety-five, making Narcan available without a prescription because I value all life. We I believe in the goals and I believe in the good intentions in these committee members' hearts and that they want to do good things. For me, it is the division that has been sowed by DEI, well, quote-unquote DEI and BLM that is the issue, not the goodness in our hearts, but the machine that it has become. Thank you.
Hey, next I have Jason Roder. I think that's the last name. Am I right on that? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and fellow citizens. I sit before you tonight with an appeal for wisdom and unity. Our city, like our nation, stands at a crossroads. The diversity, equity and inclusion movement, though well-intentioned by some, has often resulted in more division than unity. More confusion than clarity and more chaos than peace. We must remember the values upon which our nation was built, values rooted in truth. It says in the Bible, "You are my brothers and sisters and you were called to be free, but do not use your freedom to indulge the flesh. Rather, serve one another humbly in love." Let me say that again. Serve one another humbly in love. That's Galatians five thirteen. Our mission as a community should be about ensuring that every person, whether a, a trans student, a gay couple, a white male business owner, or a decorated veteran, is treated with dignity and respect. We live in a time where foundational truths are being erased, leaving children and teens lost and uncertain about their own identities. It is our duty as leaders It is our duty as leaders, parents and mentors of future generations to bring clarity on these issues. When we blur these clear distinctions, we do not create inclusion, we create confusion. President Ronald Reagan once said, we must reject the idea that every time a law is broken, society is guilty. Rather than the lawbreaker, it is time to restore the American precept that each individual is accountable for his or her actions. We need to stop demonizing those who think, live and vote differently. And start engaging in more real talk about how we move forward as neighbors, not enemies. So tonight, the best I can offer is this, a prayer. I pray heavenly father that thank you for this great city of Estacada, for the wonderful people who live, serve and work here. But Lord, let us all return to the table, not to fight over politics, but to bring our offerings of love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness and self-control. Instead of chaos, confusion and division, help us be agents of peace, moral clarity and unity, which is the foundation of all healthy communities. In Jesus's name, amen.
John Reiser. Hey, I'm gonna make this quick. John Reiser, I've been here before. I went to the council meeting for the D E I. I thought it was a joke. So I don't think City Estacada needs D E I. If you need D E I, you know, work, work within other committees to get it done, but we don't need a committee. The D E I committee. Treat other people like you'd like to be treated. Somebody made a comment about the school. I've got my wife's Asian, I've got Asian grandkids. There was an incident at school and the school was on it. They don't, they don't tolerate that at all. And I don't think they need D E I to tell them how to do that. So no D E I. Thank you.
Hello again. I want to start like I started at the workshop committee and, or in the workshop meeting and how this all started. This wasn't some radical idea that came out of left field. It was literally a direct response to what people in this community asked for. Not everyone, but some. And they asked for it. The council voted for it unanimously. The decision was made, it passed, end of story. Why are we here again? Why would some people rather put on a show than move forward? I feel like this is no longer about discussion. It's about political theater. We're rehashing decisions that were already made by people we elected to lead, keeping it local, people that we voted for. The D E I committee isn't about extremes. It's about common sense, about fixing real problems, about spotting things that others just might not see. A committee was, this committee wasn't created to divide us. It was built to unite us. It's not about slicing people up into categories. It's not about this word or that word. If you want it, let's change the name. Great. Let's change the name. Make it the Community Outreach Committee to help us hear from more folks. If, if that's the big picture, the globalist issue of D E I, then let's throw that out. We don't need that. It lets us keep who our community is and lets us do community outreach in ways that support you and that support our city so that you know, you can know for a fact you're hearing from everyone. But we've got to stop wasting time, relitigating decisions that were already made in good faith and that had community input. We're not here for political games. We're here to build a stronger, more inclusive Estacada. So we've got to stop performing, start leading and please let us get to work.
First, I'd like to apologize for my anger. I don't appreciate people from outside of the city. I've lived here for ten years. I don't appreciate them coming in here. And speaking as though they're speaking for us, because they're not. I believe in liberty and justice for all, but above these, I believe in democracy and representation. Not five men deciding who should represent me. I am a registered Republican and I am ashamed of the political divide that you have caused by trying to silence resident voices again. I voted for some of you. Mayor, I voted. Dolazol, I voted for you too. But now I woefully feel mistaken. We just want to be heard. Two weeks ago, you had already decided before even listening to someone who voted for you. And that has wilted my spirit. I want to believe you care, but I no longer assume you do. And that deeply grieves me. I'm not the only one betrayed. To do your work requires people's trust and you no longer have ours. The D E I C exists because of your past comments, Mayor Drinkwine. They nearly incited violence. If you dismantle it or weaken it, you'll reignite that outrage. You will set this city on a path that you cannot control. An eleven-year-old is being racially assaulted in our schools. The district stepped up with rise. So yeah, the school district does need it. And they voted to implement their own version of D E I. Why are you stepping back? Where's your courage? Where's your humanity? How will you tell this child tomorrow he doesn't deserve equity or inclusion because he is diverse? Why won't you protect him? Why won't you protect me or the disabled or veterans? I don't think I can bear to hear your answers. How can I even believe you now? Actions speak louder than words and your actions have deafened my soul. Based on statements in a pamphlet, I voted for representatives, not leaders, and your actions have proven you are neither. I am here for the record. You've made it clear you don't want to listen. No follower of Jesus would ignore his words so clearly spoken. Truly, I tell you, whatever you do not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me. Matthew twenty-five forty-five. We have more than one of these in our city who needs equity and inclusion.
Tyra Barrett.
Hello, I am here on a totally different, so you get a break for a little bit. I am here representing the Estacada Prevention Alliance. I've been commissioned to rebuild this alliance. It's been going since about two thousand sixteen. Covid kind of killed it and we're rebuilding it to promote prevention here in Estacada, particularly with youth substance abuse. I have two events coming up that I would really like to invite, personally invite each of you as council members to participate in. If it's okay, I have some papers to hand out to you guys about the alliance with the particulars on the event. Can I just? So the first one is a community cafe, kind of a forum style, where we're going to review some of the issues affecting youth here in Estacada. We're going to start off with a discussion about the youth or this protective factors and risk factors that affect youth. Achievement, social, mental health, all of that kind of stuff. And then kind of break into groups to discuss youth mental health, youth homelessness, unaccompanied minors and youth substance use. And then discuss how to promote community engagement to support our youth. This is something that we see decreasing across all the boards as we struggle to fill coaches positions, volunteers that run different organizations, all that promote and support our youth. And we see the effects on that in the increase in substance use, increase in mental health issues, and again, in the increase in youth homelessness here in Estacada. So I'm hoping that this becomes not just a, an informative event to help raise awareness for things happening for our youth here in Estacada, but also a brainstorming session where we as a community have an opportunity to come together around our youth, address what is happening to them, become informed about what's happening to them and make a plan on how we can support them in all of our capacities as parents, as school leaders, as community members and all of the above. So I'm really excited for this one. This event is on March sixth, so on the back of the paper that you were handed has the registration information, which is just merely a headcount. And I'm trying to get the word out that anyone in the community, whether you work with youth, have youth living in your home or are just a member here in the community, we would love to have the voice and perspective that you bring about the youth here in our community. The second one is one that I'm working on to put together, which would be a summer safety fest. Again, since my focus is on prevention, it would be essentially how do we pre-create and promote safe summer recreation for our youth. When we have a huge amount of youth, most of which whose parents work, we have a daycare situation, shortage. We have a lot of youth that are unattended throughout the summer, riding bikes around, playing on the, you know, playgrounds, the bike or the skate park, there we go, and at the river and things like that. And we want to help prevent them to, or promote them being able to do so safely and also increase the awareness of what we have here in Estacada for families and youth to do as well. So that's something I would like to invite your guys's participation in, not just your attendance, but we will be having a bike rodeo and a skateboard safety workshop going during that event. And we would love to have volunteers to help run some of the stations for that event. And that's all I have to say. Actually, really quick, can I express appreciation for the D I, D E I? They held a Nylaxone training. There were only two people there, but I really appreciated their emphasis on prevention. I haven't attended any of their other meetings, other than the ones that have been focused on Nylaxone, promoting that and promoting prevention here in Estacada and addressing the lack of mental health and other things that come out here because Estacada is a rural community. And one of the things we discuss is the lack of funds that promotes some of the things and the resources that our youth need. You know, so this is not on the record for the alliance as a support. I just want to express my appreciation in their cooperation in promoting prevention as an alliance member. Thank you.
That is all the forms I have. There are online comments at all? No? Wow. Okay. That concludes the citizen and community group comment section of this. So we will move on with the rest of the agenda. We have the consent agenda in front of us. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, but first and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Consent passes. Thank you. Department committee reports. So all of you have committee and commissions. I don't know how many of you have attended any lately, but if there are, would you like to speak on any of? Matthew?
Traffic and Safety Met, they want to know if they can move forward to present to the city their findings that are in the paperwork. They want to add two more speed cushions and they'd be placed at the least radical grade. And if we have any questions, Carrie's here to answer any of those questions.
Thank you. The other.
Economic Development Committee appointed a new chair, Ryan Carpenter. Bo had to step down, recently had a baby and felt a lot going on. So Ryan Carpenter was appointed to that position.
Okay, great. Jonathan?
Yeah, so I got a couple. We went to, we had the D E C today and they just went through strategic planning.
I wasn't able to attend that.
Yeah, they got into, they were getting into it very, very thorough. It was really impressive to watch. And the gal was here, the gal, excuse me, was here presenting. And then also I had school board. And the school board has a lot of stuff going on. The middle school had forty-two kids out for wrestling, which was like a big deal to them right now. That's quite a bit of kids for the, for the, in the youth program for wrestling this year. They also have baseball kicking off and they have over three hundred kids in the system this year for baseball. Doctor Superintendent Carpenter is starting a podcast with the school district in order to find new ways to communicate and to reach out to people. He's trying to modernize and find ways to share bond and faculty and other things like that and just keep people up to date, reach people where they're at. And so the school's going to be moving towards podcasts. Graduation rates are ninety-four percent, highest in Estacada history and number three in Clackamas County. Which is something to be very, very proud of. The school, this is a bummer. Some of the state laws have changed. The school has to pay unemployment throughout the summer now. So for their budget, there's, they have it, but they don't have, they don't know what that is. They just know to expect it's large. It's the first time it's ever happened. They want people to understand that as there's going to be obviously things affected and this is a large item, new budget item that's been added to their, their role. Ninety-six new students throughout the last year through the turn and burn that count, you know, going through losing and coming. We ended up with a total of ninety-six new kids in the districts. And then every single school that we have is either at capacity or over. Currently, we are full. You can't turn them down. So they're talking about it could get to where we have to build the, the trailers. I can't remember what they were calling them, but the, the huts essentially, they're portables. Thank you, thank you. The portables. They were talking about that if we don't figure out a way to get some capital or get the school fixed, that, that will end up eating into the playground at some rate. They expect within the next two to three years, you'll see them at the middle school as well. So lots going on in the school district. They emphasized that they emphasize that they feel like it's the community's problem to solve. That's just where they stand on that. We got to figure it out. We have the kids, they're taking them in and we got to figure out where to house them, especially if we don't want to, you know, put them in portals and things like that. So it's been a very creative strategy. They have a committee getting ready to go to get, they have a committee going, trying to look at how they could possibly restructure. There was talk about moving kids, like say one school being three or K through four and then five and six and then seven, eight, high school. They're, so they're looking at all options that would cost the community the least amount. But really what they want to solve for is the capacity issue, which is the real issue, being that we don't have a facility big enough anymore. And that's what I got from the school board this year. Sorry. A little bit longer, but lots of information.
All right, thank you. Jerry, you got anything for me?
No, I wasn't able to attend. I wasn't able to attend the D E C meeting this morning, so.
Great, thank you.
I got one more thing. There was applicants for the committee at Traffic and Safety. Are we going to vote on those here?
I don't think we're going to do that tonight. That'll probably be the
That would be at the next, at the next meeting, because it needs to get put into the pocket ahead of time.
Okay, moving on, city managers report.
All right, I have a couple of slides. One is inaccurate as of this afternoon. I put it together earlier today and then by this afternoon, it was inaccurate, which is actually a good thing. So next slide, I have our, we were going to apply for a grant for the Lake Shore Water Access Project. This is the water access part. And then phase one is actually the trails. You can't see up on the hill. I should have probably chose a different picture. But we found out just recently that that is part of FERC, which is the, I think it's the Federal Energy Regulation Commission is what that stands for. It's FERC. They're related to P G E and that is in the FERC zoning. And we're like, we cannot apply for a grant because it could take a year for me to get through FERC to get approval for that. So I had gotten this ready and then this afternoon, Elena got a message from a person at P G E that said, oh, we already got that approval for you. So we will go ahead and apply for a grant from Oregon Parks and, or Oregon Recreation, Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, O P R D. We can apply for up to a million dollars for a grant and then we would supplement that. We have to pay forty percent, but the rest of that, the top of the project that passed on the, on phase one, the estimate was about one point eight million dollars. And so if we could get a grant for a million and then we could fund eight hundred thousand dollars of that with our system development charges that we've been saving up for additional parks, then we could get going on at least the beginning of that. So that's a little adjustment. Hopefully we will get to apply for that, but we're also double checking. We'd like to apply for the, a grant through the same organization to update the parks master plan this year. We just need to confirm that we can apply for both. Because the, the planning grant is about forty thousand dollars and we would give that up in lieu of applying for the other one if we need to. But if we can apply for both, we will. So just kind of wanted to update you on that. And the next slide, we have a program that I've been looking at. It's a possible partnership program for military service members. It's called Skill Bridge. I'm not sure if anybody has heard of it. It's for people who are leaving their military service for their last six months. Well, three to six months, they can become part of the Skill Bridge program and the that helps them transition to working outside of the military. So as you can see there, it helps, the city would, the benefit to the city would be gaining early access, meaning Meaning we're going to snatch them up before they get out into the regular job market. Um, with their extensive experience, skills and unmatched work ethos or ethos, service members bring to the workforce. And I know that we can attest to that. Um, the employers, which would be the city of Estacada, can craft that program to meet a specific workforce need. And so it's more, it's like, kind of like an internship where we're training them up. Um, but they're also bringing the skills they already have. The D O D pays the salary and benefits for the duration of that program, which is up to six months. And then we, the employer can either hire them on or through a network, try to, you know, help them introduce them to other opportunities for employment. So that transition is, um, is smooth. So I'm looking at doing this for our communications and PR specialist. And we, the next step would be, oh, if we get accepted, um, with the application I just submitted, um, would be, it'd be a three-year term. So we could do it up to three times if we're adding other staff later on as well. Um, we'd do a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Defense. And then, so that's the next thing that you would see if there's support for this. I think it seems like a, a great way to bring on a new, a new person. It's kind of like the, um, I've heard of like fire and law enforcement, where they can get a grant to bring some people on for a few years and then they take it over after that. But um, this would kind of be just six months. But anyway, there's any questions about that or is there general support for that type of a program? If I could work it out. I have to come up with a training um, schedule, which I could do, but.
I would support it. Yeah, I think, I think it's a creative solution for sure. Um, we ask, we need the help.
We do need the help.
What a way to do it without moving our budget around too.
It would help us at least kick it off.
I think they need help, so I've seen it firsthand.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think that's a go.
All right. Well, the next thing that you will see then is probably that when I get the M O U, they'll bring it to the next council meeting or such. And then I will um, go ahead and close the slideshow and Peter has the update.
Yeah, so we have, we have two. One is that um, I, I really want to thank the school district. Um, we've been challenging Portland State University's population projection for the city. That's um, how they calculate our share of shared state funds. And traditionally their population estimate for us has been low. We think it's low this year. Um, the school district is able to get us uh, the total increase of students, but also the increase of students that come from inside of the city of Estacada. So we can kind of demonstrate um, the growth in the county portion versus the growth in the city. And it's something like twenty-eight percent um, increase from twenty-twenty to twenty uh, to May of twenty-twenty-four um, inside the city. And then about seven uh, percent increase over the same period for the county. So both are growing, but the, the city is growing a lot faster than the county. Then through um, through voter registration increases, we're able to demonstrate population um, over the age of eighteen, because a motor voter. Uh, the one, the one area where it's been more challenging to get information is children under the age of five. So we know there are a bunch of them. We, we don't have a clear metric to kind of demonstrate that. But um, so uh, Portland State's received all those materials. They, they let us know that they had received them and that they're going to respond. Uh, the other thing is uh, we've gotten a bunch of complaints about odor issues in the, in the manufacturing park. And it, we've gotten those in the past, but the volume of complaints that we've gotten uh, recently um, has gone up and, and also kind of the reports of um, I don't want to say harmed other business, but I, I do want to say that other businesses have reported having employees that had difficulty working uh, because some of the, the odor issues. So we, we would like to bring um, some, you know, potential regulatory things uh, for council discussion as well as maybe some code changes. There's, there are tools, just like there are tools for um, to, there are tools to measure noise that are clear and objective. There are also some tools that can measure odor. So what we want is, is clear and objective and fair. We, we'd want to educate everyone in advance so that they knew well in advance and, and to the extent they can mitigate some of this. And help their neighbors out and, and that we can demonstrate to all of our businesses there that we're hearing them and that we're trying to be responsive uh, in the way that we can. So we have some, we're, we're going to need to discuss some ideas, but before I brought regulations back, I just want to make sure that you, that's something that you as a council would want to look at. You could adopt all of them. You could adopt none of them. You could tell us, nice try, but we have something else in mind. Uh, we'll, but we'll try and be comprehensive in this and, and also try and be thoughtful and educating people as we go.
Thank you, Peter. Is that all you have tonight?
Yeah, I was looking for feedback now.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be interested in seeing some code amendments that included grandfathering out um, the allowed use for rows in the industrial park. Just eliminating it, allowing the businesses occurring there to operate until they sell the property. They can take their license with them. So I'd like to see that as an option. Um, and then code, the city of Portland had adopted some code that just basically stated that if the odor stands for more than fifteen minutes, then it's a problem that can be addressed. And if, for the businesses that would stay, um, I'd like to see um, something similar to that, where they can go in and regulate their HVAC systems and do an inspection. If there's a standing odor coming from a building for greater than fifteen minutes, then our code enforcement has the ability to go do an inspection or we hire a contractor to do an inspection on the HVAC system to make sure that they're in good order and that they're actually being used, that they're keeping the facilities closed like they're supposed to be.
Yeah, and, and we've, we've talked about that a bit and I, I think we can do that with a, with a business, with the business license that would uh, allow expedited entry and uh, just verification that the systems are it, being used and are, and are cleared out, because the filters apparently need to be cleared out, um, changed every year. So yeah, there's, there are definitely some, um, there are definitely a couple of different ways that we can, we can get at this and, and we can bring those kind of the various tools so you can determine what's the best one for the community.
Thank you. Anything else for Peter?
No, I just, I support that. Please, bring it back.
Okay.
Okay, that's all we have.
All right. Um, I don't usually speak on this part, but I'm going to, um, as the mayor. There's been a lot of misunderstanding with my position as the mayor of Estacada. Tonight, twice, my name was brought up as a racist in some fashion or started the racism, racism talks in Estacada. I'd just like to make it quite clear. Number one, I'm not a racist. Number two, I come from a very diverse family. And when I say diverse, I mean diverse. Okay, every nationality is captured in my family. And I can honestly tell you, I have never thought racist about any color creed or religion in my life. So let's be clear going forward, if you want to use my name. Use my name for the person that I am, not who you've heard I am, not who you think I am, but who I am. I would greatly appreciate that. But that said, we are now moving into council business. Um, the first on there is diversity, equity and inclusion committee direction. Um, we said we would give you an opportunity for your questions. Uh, she has given us the questions. Um, counsel? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Let me have an answer to that first. First question, why are you wanting to shut down the committee? Um, I think the community would be better served with an ad hoc committee. That when we have direction, the, the complaint is that we haven't had, um, you guys haven't had direction from us that we're not giving you enough work. And I think that's true. I think that the community would be better served with an ad hoc committee. That when we have that work that needs to be done to make sure that everyone's included in decisions that are being made by the city, that we pull from members of other standing committees to make sure that we're looking at things through that lens. And I think that would be a better option. Why can't we keep the committee with a different name? Um, same, same answer. I think it would be better served with an ad hoc committee. I don't think the name has much to do with it. I think it's important that people are included, that they're heard and that we make sure that people with disabilities, um, people that are underrepresented are represented in the decisions we're making. And I think that's an important thing to consider. And I think it'd be, could be accomplished with an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Heidi, I'll let you go next.
Okay. Uh, you know, I, I keep hearing these arguments against the D E I committee. But nobody's bringing up examples of the actual harm the committee is doing to our residents. I'm hearing bizarre off-the-wall reasoning to get rid of it. Everyone is bringing up national issues, issues that don't have anything to do with the committee's work and its actual purpose. I have a simple question. What harm is this committee in Estacada actually causing? We tend to take something that feels emotionally true and wrap things around so that it fits our own agenda instead of actually listening to the intentions of our fellow residents. If we get rid of this committee, we need to ask that um, if this action causes more suffering or alleviates suffering, and if the benefit outweighs the risk. At some point, both sides have to compromise for the greater good of everyone. Getting rid of this committee will not automatically solve the division. Um, an ad hoc committee effectively stops any progress of the outreach that um, the committee wants to do, that we want to accomplish as a council of communication. Um, and only brings them uh, every so often to consult on things like the natural hazard mitigation plan, which is very important, but there could be more to be done.
Which one?
Jonathan. Not Jonathan.
I think it's important that everybody's included. I mean, I feel like I, I said this in the, in the workshop, quite frankly. And I meant it. You guys asked, asked me specifically for my direct, for my personal direct reasons on what, where, why my mind says goodbye to the D I C thing. And my answer remains the same. I think that you guys in this community are beautiful people. I think your spirit is pure. I think that your intent is pure. I think that there's a place for you in any, in any committee that you want to volunteer on. But I do not see the need for D I C in this community. And I'm not saying that, that I don't think that you have a right to your feelings or a right to assemble, quite frankly. And to have a public group and to do those very same things and advise us on these very same issues. There's, you'll never hear me tell you don't or you shouldn't. I think that's your free right to choose. So that's where I stand on this.
So, you know, why now? And there's a very specific reason why now. Um, as we're growing and our uh, infrastructure needs um, are, are um, extreme and you know, the, the, it's different now. Um, in order to get federal funds, you can't have a D E I committee. Uh, the evidence um, shows uh, regarding the D E I committee, it shows um, limited uh, effect. Um, some of the examples given earlier regarding microphones and murals. Um, I'm not sure what role the D E I committee had in that, other than uh, it's just the, the spirit of this community wanting to help others. Uh, because I think that's what this place is and whether D E I uh, committee exists or not. Uh, you know, the, and I meant it, I don't think that the D E I proponents or uh, yeah, proponents here are, are after the money. Um, but it is striking reading the comments um, and, and some of the reactions uh, against those that, that aren't in agreement with the D E I committee, um, that we've become anathema. And I use that word um, specifically. So uh, um, I would not support the D E I committee. Matt? Um, oh, as the points were given, I appreciate that. There's a lot of good things that the committee can do, but the problem is what has it become from what it started out to be? Okay? Now it's just, my definition is they're applying unequal standards to ensure preferential outcomes for individuals and groups based on race, sex and gender identity. Okay, if you disagree with their ideas, then you're also not included. If the idea is to have this in the manner in which you guys presented, then I don't see a reason why we can't get rid of this and you guys reassemble a committee with clear, very concise ideas. Okay? I don't think sex should have anything to do with it. Okay, I'm a father of four children under the age of fourteen. Okay? There should be no sex involved in schools. There doesn't need to be any in our society. As brought up earlier.
I keep talking. They can't hear that.
Let's keep talking. Yeah, we can't speak right now, please. Please.
So.
Continue.
I believe that the committee has its best intentions for the city. And I agree with a lot of their intentions. However, D E I as a whole, federal on down, has become something that it isn't anymore or what it was intended to be. And I can't. I can't go along with it.
So a few years ago, um, right around the time that this committee was formed, uh, there were a few people in the community who stood staunchly against D E I, regardless of what it meant. They tagged, you know, they attached my name and a, a former counselor's name to some beliefs that we never, never believed in. You know, none of us ever, no, nobody that's ever been involved with the D E I committee or nobody that's ever been on this council has wanted to bring drag queens into our schools to read to our kids. Nobody on this, nobody on this council and nobody on our D E I committee has ever wanted to bring a kitty litter box and put them in the bathrooms at our schools. So there's a lot of beliefs like that, that my name and again, the D E I and a former counselor were, you know, tagged in that were not our beliefs, but they were posted on social media. And uh, um, that's not what, that's not what, that's not why we started this. That's not what, what this committee has ever been about. There's been a lot of national D E I stuff that's been spoken about tonight, which has nothing to do with our local D E I committee. Um, our local D E I committee has been uh, you know, like I said, working towards one of our council goals this year, which is community engagement and accessibility. So I'd like to see the committee stay together in that forum, in that capacity of community engagement and, and accessibility. Because I think that's uh, you know, if you read through their work chart, that's, that's what they're working towards. And that is, again, it's one of our council goals that we agreed on during our council retreat. Um, and if we don't have this committee to do that, what, what are we going to do to fill that gap? What are we going to do as a council to fill that gap, to do the work of community engagement and accessibility? Um, I think having this, having that committee on board, um, you know, that, that, that's, that's what fills that gap. That's what, that's who does that work. So that's where I stand. Um, again, bring up, bring up Facebook posts from many, many years ago. I'm going to bring up the, you know, the same stuff. And uh, those were never my beliefs, uh, the beliefs that y'all tagged me, tagged me in and uh, um, not what the D E I stands for.
Wow. This is a tough one for me because I uh, already told you about the B L N thing and what happened with that. I was labeled a racist and it affected my family. It affected me. It affected everything in my life. Because I was hurt by that. My own community hung me out to dry and told me I was a racist. Whether I liked it or not, I was definitely one. Because that's just the way it was and I had to accept that. I don't. And I never have. D E I has become political, period. I don't care how you label it. I don't care what you call it. It is political, very political, and it's a hot topic. Okay, all over the nation. You're right. And Estacada is not excluded from that. We're right in the middle of it. Does it have a purpose? I'm sure it does. Is it the right fit for Estacada? You know? I don't think it is. And I think it was ruined by the political stance that people took. I think they destroyed the very reason why D E I was brought to be. That's a shame. But at the same time, is it time to change it? Possibly, yes. And I don't say that on a light heart. It just doesn't work. And not because the ideas that you've brought to the table. And not because the ideas that you've brought to the table aren't there. All over the world, there's things that are happening that are biased or diverse or inappropriate or. Doesn't have a place. Have they been there forever? Yes, they have. Will there be change? I think we will grow. I do. But I can't say that D E I stays just based on D E I. It just, it's got. It's got too much. Hatred involved in that. And I I say that with the nicest way I possibly can. It's not a racist issue. It's just a hate. It's a hate that's there and it's never gonna go away. And no matter how long we keep it. It's never gonna go away. There's always gonna be a separation. So is it gonna be effective at that point? I don't think so. Now, I didn't ask you to speak. So please, keep quiet. If you can't keep quiet, you can leave the council chamber.
Tabitha, can we talk about it afterwards? I'll talk with you.
Needless to say, uh, that's how I feel about it. But we'll move on from there. Uh, we are at that point. Where the direction of D I is on the table. So. Whatever your motion to go forward.
I moved to disband the D E I committee in place of an ad hoc committee to be pulled from standing members of other committees. As needed for um when we need to look into inclusion and make sure that everyone's represented in the decisions of the city.
Comment first. Yeah, my comment would be separating them. Uh, one motion to dissolve. The existing D E I committee and then either a second motion at this time to form an ad hoc or table. The formation of an ad hoc.
Okay, well, I don't think we can change the motion at this point. It's already in play. Uh, but that's a consideration. Same time, Melanie.
I was also gonna ask to to for modification, but um. Not sure. I guess Peter could guide us or we could let this one fail and make a new motion, but I was gonna request that. Rather than pulling committee members from other committee, an ad hoc committee from other committees already standing that we could. Um, have maybe a shortlist of people we know are interested or have different needs or perspectives or. Accessibility issues and we could kind of have them on a shortlist and then we could also just post it for anybody. Say, hey, this is the topic that we're, we need a review on. This is the, we're gonna have this many meetings. It's gonna be in September, November and January. And there it's gonna take about this much time and that people can decide if they can join it, but we wouldn't be limited to the committee members we already have. We could include others and. In this kind of ad hoc, that that's just up for.
Mike, since you made the motion. Would that be an amendment? That would fit into that.
I'd be, I mean, I'd be open to, it didn't have to necessarily be uh standing members from other committees. We could open up to the community. Um, for those positions. It doesn't need to be a standing committee. Of the same people each time. If if there's a topic that impacts a certain part of our community and we want feedback from that community to make sure we're. Um, they're represented. I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, John first.
It seems like it'd be simpler to go ahead since there's a motion or. You know, uh, motion and seconded to go ahead and uh vote on that, um, let it fail. And then separate the two issues, uh, one uh to dissolve the existing D E I committee. And then the second, either tonight or at another time, depending on what details um need to be worked out. Uh, making a a second motion regarding a potential ad hoc committee.
You could withdraw the motion.
I can, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, motion withdrawn. Now we'll start up with a new motion on the table, right?
I move to remove the D E I C committee. In totality.
Second.
Okay, first and the second. We'll do roll call on this city.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we should be debating the motion.
It's pretty simple. Okay, let's open it for discussion.
Thank you. Um, I I just wanna say that the community tried to get this council to give merely their blessing on. An outside community of residents trying to do outreach and that was called Community Heart and Soul. We rejected their efforts. So we're rejecting inside city committees and we have rejected outside group of residents, so. I I don't, I just don't know how we are gonna bridge the gap.
Any other discussion on that?
Uh, I'm in agreement with that. Um, you know, like I've been saying the whole time since our council retreat. One of our main council goals is community ex uh engagement and accessibility. And we're taking away a committee that is dedicated to community engagement and accessibility. Um. You know, how are we gonna fill that gap? I I really want, I really want, I wanna know if anybody has any ideas how we're gonna fill that gap. We all voted. We all put that up there as one of our council goals. You know, we all, we all sat in on that same except for Matthew. We all sat sat in on that same retreat. And that is one of our council goals. It's, it was actually number two on the list. Um, so I mean, how are we gonna fill that gap since we're getting away? We're, we're trying to dissolve a committee that is dedicated to community engagement and accessibility, which is the main tagline of that. Council goal.
We're not trying, I mean, from the sound of it, what we're trying to do is dismantle something that is. Has a stigma now that is going down the wrong direction. We're trying to end that, trying to start over. Create our own for Estacada. That's why he's trying to do an ad hoc committee, okay?
Well, but again, a a a question from the gallery. Um, what harm are they doing? What are, what have they done that has been so divisive? To the city of Estacada? What have they, what has this committee done? That's been divided, that's caused this division. They, nothing in their work has uh, you know, has caused division in the city of Estacada. Nothing that they've done um had in their work has caused division in the city of Estacada. Sure, there, there's comment, there's. Social media comments by one, one committee member that, you know, it definitely has caused some, you know, caused some strife. But that's one committee member, not, not the, it that doesn't resemble what this entire committee is doing. Um, this committee is, you know, has done nothing but work towards, you know, our. Council goal of community engagement and accessibility, so.
I, I appreciate that. I think it's amazing. I think they can continue to do it. But I think that under D E I, it shouldn't be done anymore.
Right, and that's why I made the recommendation to change them to exactly that, community engagement and accessibility. Um, or what they suggested better together. Either way, uh, both work for me. But um rather than dissolving the committee and taking away that. You know, that, that. Beneficial, you know, work that they're doing of in community engagement and accessibility. You know, why, why don't we just rename them, refocus them on doing community engagement and accessibility to our local government? Accessibility to other things in our city. Um, you know, rather than dissolve them, we can, we can just. Change what they do. We can direct them to do what fits our council goals rather than just dissolving and getting rid of them.
Well. Uh, you don't need to answer to it. It's.
Yeah, I, again. It's a difficult crossroad. I'm I'm gonna be honest, it is a difficult crossroad, but I agree with your statements, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that you're racist. I don't think that was your intent with anything that you've said. I don't, I don't see that personally. I will say that I do think that no matter how you look at it, it has been politicized. And I think that's shameful on everybody's part, quite frankly. And that's why I remain with my comments that I don't like it. And quite frankly, I would love to see this same tenacity and energy directed. At the things that are costing our citizens money that you have about the things. You're representing one voice here. One side of this equation, which is fine, and I love that because most of them are your constituents, as you should. And I salute you for that. However, what I would ask is that you remove personal bias from this. As your role as a counselor and that you make this. I would ask that you remove personal bias and that you go ahead and just make your decision based off what we're up here to do, which is not partisan. It's just on the direction of what we think the community wants us to do, period, yeah.
Regarding the council goal reaching out to the the community, uh, the D E I committee is not the sole uh vehicle to do that. Um, my experience on on other committees, we're doing that all the time. Um, and so. And then just with everything else that had been said, I think now's the time to uh. Um, go ahead and dissolve the the D E I committee. And and then develop some alternatives to to improve our or increase our uh community outreach.
My motion stands.
Okay, motion's on the floor, second's on the floor. Um, any other questions, Senator, you'd like to vote? Okay, um, let's go with a roll call vote on this, please.
Counselor Blevins.
I vote to dissolve.
Counselor Dolezal.
I think that's a yes.
Counselor McElroy.
Yes.
Counselor Metcalf.
Yes.
Counselor Prokop.
No.
Counselor Ten Bush.
No.
Mayor Drinkland.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need a motion for that, though?
No, you, if you wanna, if you wanna enact it tonight, um, you could make a motion. If you want to instruct staff to bring it back next meeting as an agenda item, then let. And let them know, then, then you can do that.
I think we could bring it back on the next, the next agenda item and so we could have further discussion about what that looks like and get more input from everyone on what they think that the. It sounds like we need to work out some details on on who the pool of people are and what that looks like and how we call them to.
We can bring back some information about that and take clarification from the council and the interpretation of.
All right. Next, we have uh council rules and update. And I'll hand that off to you, Melanie.
All right, this is um in regard to council rules and in the city charter. Which is approved by the voters and and is the governing document of the city. Um, it says that the council must by resolution adopt rules to governance meetings. And these changes are proposed and may be approved as presented, um, the changes that I'm gonna talk about in a minute. They can, so they can be approved as presented or with revisions as does as um directed by the council. Um, and so there's two rec, there's two changes if we scroll down to. Um, the first one is on page twenty one of the packet. And that is, this suggestion is to add into the order of business for your agendas. The work sessions so that during um, like tonight, we had a work session at five and then we had a council meeting at six. That would all be combined into one agenda and that way somebody wouldn't miss, you know. They wouldn't look at the council meeting and then not realize there's a a a work session prior to that. It would all be included into one. Um, into one agenda.
It would also allow us if, if we had a really short work session, because sometimes it's not predictable how long they'll go. So if, if we had a work session that lasted ten minutes, then instead of waiting fifty minutes, which we've had to do in in the past. We could roll right into so that members of the community would know when to arrive, um, which is at that five o'clock time. Um, but then we could, we wouldn't have to recess for a lengthy period of time if this was all part of the same agenda.
Any questions about that? Okay, all right, then, um, secondly, if you scroll down to page twenty five in the packet. I've proposed some language that would clarify the role of the liaison. Um, the can, the council liaison to the committee. I'll just read that. Previously, it just said. Not much. It said that um any counselor or mayor can attend a a committee meeting. Um, but just don't become involved in the discussion unless you're the liaison. And so to clarify that, because we want these committees leading themselves and the count, the. Um, liaison be there as a representative of the council to help out. This is what I propose. And it's open for discussion. Um, a liaison member of the committee represents the council. And may provide guidance to aid the members in staying on track with council goals. A liaison member does not lead the committee or become overly involved in the committee's discussions. The liaison member may choose to sit in the audience or at the dais depending on what best suits the productivity of the committee. So it leaves it somewhat open, but do, was there any revisions anybody would like to make or is that?
I think that's pretty clean so that um council members aren't. Getting too involved in guiding the discussion of the direction that the committees are going. I think it's, I think it's great.
All right, okay, those were the two um. The two, oops, I gotta scroll back up. Proposed revisions to the council rules. So if you agree with those, if you agree with those, um, there's a motion to. Approve the uh revisions as presented and direct staff to bring back a resolution because we'll need to have you approve that by resolution, so.
I move to approve the revisions to the council rules as presented. Um, and direct staff to bring back a resolution for approval as required by the charter.
Okay, motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those favors, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, speed bump discussion.
Okay, and in this case, um, council requested that staff bring back more information on existing speed humps. And standards from other cities such as Happy Valley. And so I um, I didn't provide any kind of a motion here, but just provide direction to staff, please. I've put in here a speed data that we collected on Oakview Lane, which is where the the issue that we're having within. Approving that request because it doesn't meet the standards. Um, and then I included nice little report with some images and some slopes of um the speed humps that I did find. And then the the Happy Valley policy. Um, just in its entirety. And I did reach out to Chris Randall in in Happy Valley to ask, say, hey, what? If you have speed humps that are on hills that are exceeding the slope, you know, what do you do with those? And he said that they don't remove them. Um, if they're doing maintenance on that road, they'll put them back as, you know, as close to standard as possible, but they disregard the slope. Um, policy that exists now, but they will not um install any new speed humps that don't meet the standards, including the slope. So I just wanted to present this to the council. Um, ordinarily, this wouldn't probably elevate to a council level, but it has come up to you. And so if there's a, um, if you have questions or if there's a exception that you wanna make, just just give some direction.
So. One, thank you for bringing this back to us and stuff. In, in some of the photos, well, you just said they disregarded, right? In the areas that they have it, they're, they admit to it, that they just put it back and kind of disregard. So I guess what, I guess what I'm asking is what would you need for us if these other cities are saying? That they can, they just make it work essentially, right? They just put it there anywhere. They leave it there.
So, so if, if it's a pre-existing speed bump, then they, they leave it. They don't allow new speed bumps on a slope that exceeds the the public safety standards. So basically, the speed bumps as they exist. The speed bumps that existed are kind of grandfathered in as a pre-existing non-conforming use. And then for any new speed bumps that are proposed, they follow the um best practices.
So, w- w- could we, I guess, this is. I'm asking for clarity here. So could, do you need us, could we recommend just making an exception and put them on the lowest grade?
You could make that exception because as staff, we can't go, we can't make that exception. Um, so I, if you've looked at the, like, the data of the speeds on that road and determined that there's an issue that needs to be solved. And that this is probably the best way to so, to solve it, um, then just you would direct us to do that. I'd also request that you prioritize that because we were. There's a lot of things going on. Our priority really is the school area, school zone area, especially as it goes past River Mill. Um, would this elevate above that or would it, um, do we just put it in order? We'll have to budget for it and um. Just, I don't know, I guess what priority is it? And then if other people come and ask for exceptions, when do you want us to say this is an exception? That the council might consider or that the council really doesn't wanna consider exceptions, so they might come to you anyway.
The, the other pieces. Um, we might wanna contact our insurer just to make sure we understand if we're gonna deviate from, from the. Um, the engineering best practice that, and I didn't either. Um. That we wanna make sure we have coverage. We wanna make sure that this doesn't. Cause us to not have coverage on for that piece of apparatus if if there's later in time an issue.
So I actually went, there were a a couple of streets identified in Portland. Um. Where there were some kind of uh speed mitigating, so I went and drove them. And a a couple of things, one, um. Hopefully I don't get in trouble, but I made sure I. Hopefully I don't get in trouble, but I made sure I s- I sped over the uh. I don't know, they're not humps, they're like cushions or something like that, because from the s- the start at one end. To the end of the other was like twenty one feet or twenty two feet uh for the entire structure, whatever you call it. And so um. Without um. Indicting myself, I I I I made a pretty good run at it and there was nothing. Um, I don't know what the elevation was from the the base of the of the road to the top of the of the structure. But I don't think it was very high, so um and and it looks like the slope uh where that that. Uh, device was, i- it looked less than O- Oakview, um, which is like seventeen or something like that, but. But I don't know, um, I just wanted to go drive it. The other thing remarkable about that area was the speed limit was twenty. Um, not twenty five, uh, and then I I took the next step and um. I took a look at, I knew they were looking at Happy Valley, so I went and looked at San Francisco. Uh, you know, you've, I don't know if you've ever driven around San Francisco, but some of those streets are. Are like vertical, and so I looked up their um. Program and and I'll say that in all of the programs that we've looked at, uh, and I think it's five or six or seven. I don't even know how many different ones, but every single one of them has a uh measurable speeding problem component to it. Where uh I think it's eighty five percent or more of people driving on the block are doing so at a speed of five miles per hour. Five miles per hour or more above the limit. I know that by understanding is we did a speed uh survey on the particular section in question. Um, I don't think it it showed anything like that, but I also understand that that may have been. During that real bad weather when no one was speeding anyways. Um, so I would be okay with um. With uh. Uh, doing another speeds study, um, but I I think it would be important to identify. Uh, that there is in fact a speeding problem, um, before we go ahead and put in speed mitigating devices. Uh, the other side of that coin might be unless we want to just completely ignore that component, which is a whole different decision. Um, but but that's where I s- uh I stand right now, the devices that I drove over in Portland. Uh, you know, the the very long length, it didn't, you know, I was thinking of physics the first time that topic came up. And it it was nothing um significantly over the limit. And uh, but wanting to make a a data driven decision, I think uh, I think that's that's where I'm at, is looking for more data.
Yeah, really, really quickly, uh, I'm in support of another s- uh speed study as well, but I think it's important to point out that the. I think the first one that you just performed one more recently on that, right? But it was Darren like an inclement weather time.
It was over the whole week, so it did include those two days of where we had bad weather, but if you looked at the. Um, the days around that, it was pretty common. But but yeah, it was, there was the two, was the thirteenth and the fourteenth, was those the two days of the?
I don't I don't recall specifically, but I'm just, if we do another one, I would say let's just try to, obviously, we can't. Yeah, but hopefully we're past that now, I would just like to see one under normal conditions on a regular day.
And this was downhill also, I could have done do an uphill, and he's getting some better equipment that actually counts the vehicles and. So we could do another another speed study and while we're working on the River Mill School area.
Yeah.
Like actually working on that area, but then gathering more data if that's consensus.
Yeah, I agree with John too, I I think it needs to be data driven, because if someone else comes and asks for it and there's not the data driven portion of it for. Like an eighty five percentile, there's got to be a bar met, otherwise. If we're choosing one street over another and there's no data to support it, it's going to be a real, but it's a really tough spot. And the insurance component, I'd be really interested in supporting another speed study during good weather, finding out on the insurance side of things and and. For sure, having a uh uh data driven component to for for requirement. Or that there's trackable speed and happy down the road before we put speed mitigation.
Where's that gonna come from? Who, how are we gonna decide when we've hit that data? Like at this data, we're putting in speed bumps, wh- at this, you know what I mean?
Benchmark?
Like, where's our benchmarks so that we know what goal we're trying to hit? If we haven't hit it, no speed bumps, if we've hit it, speed bumps, end of story.
In the um, the Happy Valley one, they did, I don't know if we included it.
Even five miles per hour.
Eighty five percent of the vehicles are five miles an hour or more over.
So do we want to use Happy Valley as the standard?
I I just want us to have some sort of standard that we apply equally to anyone that brings it to us.
Does Clackamas County as a whole have a standard?
I don't know if they, I don't know if they put in speed humps, but I could check with other cities and get, like, is there, is this a standard operating procedure to do the five percent? I mean, yeah, five miles an hour over, if there's eighty five percent of the vehicles doing that. Or if there's other cities do other options, so I could see what other cities do. I can't remember if we had included one in our policy, but it was, there, a lot of them are pretty similar. Um, so I could bring back some options for what the standard could be, the council could decide, and then also more data on the.
Yeah, and another city that has a lot of steep slopes is Westland, so it might be interesting to. I'm trying to think of what what cities have a bunch of steep slopes. Maybe like us we go, um, Westland's really. Oregon City's got some, yeah, for sure.
Okay, yeah, I can spring back where.
And I'd just like us to put emphasis on um. Priorities, the these are all very high risk areas, I mean, we're seeing a lot of speeding in our town. There's no question to it, I hear it all night long, I sit above Fourth Street, I watch it go back and forth, you know, and it's a time track. And there's going to be an accident, so I'd like us to put emphasis that we do this fast and efficient, so speed. Speed study, great, let's do that, but let's push it.
Yep, we can do that, and also I, anytime I get a speed complaint, I do um send a message out to our deputies and say, hey, this is a concern in this. In this particular area, and so they can go out and do some enforcement and and monitoring of the area as well.
What's the occurrence of that been lately?
Um, I had one, I had a call last week, I di- maybe. It's really random, um. I would say maybe a couple of times a month, somebody will call with a complaint and I'll pass it on to the deputies, so.
Is that all the questions? Consensus to move forward with the speed study.
Okay, bring back more data, okay, I'll just bring back more data, see if you want to make an exception, I know we've made exceptions and pushed back on engineers in the past. Um, and so I'll find with that, I just, I appreciate the data driven response to it. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, that's all I have in council business, so we're going to move on to the next citizen and community group comment. Uh, I have one in front of me, is there anybody else that wants to turn one in? All right, uh, we have Vincent Bellamo first on the list.
Okay, so. The reason I didn't. Fully. Just talk about DEI in the first, because I knew it was going to fall on deaf ears, I knew this was going to be the decision of this council, I knew. That you were simply going to dissolve it and not actually put in any hard work to actually make it work, you were just going to toe the party line, do what you were going to do anyway. And that's what happened, so. I think it's interesting that you talk about having tourists come here, you talk about involving the community. Yet, there's never been a solid idea from any of you on actually how to do that. You don't promote citizen engagement, you constantly. Turn your backs on a large section of your constituents, and this is the reason that I say that. You only care about your personal interests, because you time and time again, you put your personal interests. In front of the interest of the community. And I think it shows through your actions and less through your words, because you do like to say things like, we want everybody to come. We want all these things, but you're not actually willing to put in the hard work to make it work. And here's the thing about commissions, we are volunteers who set aside our valuable time to try to help the city. Not only did you burn the DEI with this decision, you're burning every other commission. You're telling us that our opinions do not matter to you and that you're just going to do what you want anyway. That's the main point, John, quick thing, I. The one thing that's genuinely concerning to me is that you apparently can't comprehend that there are racist and bigoted people out there. The depths of your na- naivete are boundless and astonishing, and I genuinely worry about the leadership in this city. Because the leadership overall federally and on this city is taking us backwards in time. We're not progressing, we're not moving forward, you're simply arsonists who want to burn down every safety net and guard rail. We put in place over the last sixty years, all so that you can. Take a bunch of money straight from the middle class and give it straight to the billionaire class, that's purely what's going to happen. Whether you believe me now or you believe me in a few years, we'll see who is right, but that's what I believe is what's going to happen, thank you.
Bellamo, that's why you're not sitting up here, I think. Okay, Chris Stanton.
Good evening, you guys, I wanted to just give props to my son earlier, it's not easy as a youth to come out, and obviously, this, as you guys have already acknowledged, this is a. A hard topic for the divisiveness of the community and the different stances and demotions and the the strong stance of any either side, right? Um, I'm going to take a different route a little bit with this, I did come out for that particular topic, um. I do appreciate that we have this ability, right, we are able to speak, you guys are listening, that's not always easy within communities. Uh, whether it be small, big, uh, differences aside, sometimes that's hard to talk to your own people when there's small differences, especially. If there's major differences, so I appreciate that we can still do that, that's still part of this organization, the system, right? Um, what I would like to do is instead of trying to get information from you, because you guys shared a lot. Um, and at the same time, that's not just you. Um, some of you I know more personally, some of you I don't know at all, some of you don't know me at all, right, you don't know how long I've lived here, you don't know what I do. And I don't want to put like labels out or label anyone, because I don't know, um, and I don't expect to be labeled here. But I was, what I was hoping is, is to try to get at least a a maybe with the idea of having a coffee with me. Being able to within some timeframe, whether it be before summer, something where I could sit down and just hear from you. Get to know you, you get to know me, and I know that it's not easy to do that, but when we talk about people labeling us based upon something we've said, maybe it's out of context. Maybe it's in a bigger picture that then someone uses for their agenda, maybe it's accurate, maybe it's not, it's hard to personalize when we don't know people. And, you know, I have felt within the last few times that I've come down here, um, it's really nice to know that we have such a small community where. We can engage with this, it's local enough to where I can come down on a busy night after I'm teaching, and I can still be a part of this without feeling like. It's a major move for me to get here, um, but I still don't know many of you, and you're brand new, so I don't know you at all. Um, but at the same time, I would like to know that, I'd like to be able to move forward with that, so that as I'm making decisions, whether it be voting in the future. Um, knowing or trusting as people talked about where someone comes from, there's more than just a single vote. Even if I might disagree with it, I want to understand you as our council members better, as our mayor better. So that when I'm talking to people in the community, there's also diplomacy that I can offer, because if someone's like, oh, that guy or that person. If I know you, if I know someone, I can maybe agree with some of that, but I can also say, and. If we don't know you, we don't have the and, or we might too much hyphen or hyper focus is what I meant to say. On a specific attribute, a specific vote, um, I want to move beyond that, and I don't think that this setting allows for us to do that, because. Right, three minutes and obviously you're not responding or able to answer questions and that, but I want to, I want to move beyond the three minutes, I want to be. Able to move beyond this table to better have that and use that as an example for our community, so if you'd be interested, thumbs up. Okay, cool, I got most, thank you.
Yeah, and also, I would, I would like to tell your son, well done too, it does take a tremendous amount of courage, but especially about a hot topic. And I love to see that the youth come and they share their opinion, and you know what, sometimes it doesn't go our way or it's a tough decision to be made, but I respect your son for setting up their.
You know, I I privately, before the uh workshop started, went to Chris and Kalika and thanked them for Corbin's. You know, his participation in the DEC being the youth liaison, um, I'm just making that public now, Corbin's an amazing kid. Both the, both of their kids are, uh, the two that I know are amazing kids, um, and I really appreciate, you know, what they do for our community, the whole family. So, uh, thank you, guys. Matt suits, that's what it looks like.
Matt? Yes.
A weird thing, a small town, I guess, I also have a corpsman, but it's a grandson and my name is Matt, but I don't care if it's old Matt. Um, a- as a recent applicant to the Transportation and Safety Committee, something you guys brought up. I didn't want to let go, um, I was the council liaison for part department, public safety. Um, till a couple of years ago, in a little town east in Oregon. Um, one of the things I remember last couple of years, I think the state of Oregon was going to allow communities like cities. That had a state highway going through them to have a whole lot more control over uh. Uh, establishing their own speed limits, and then something else was brought up, some, it's kind of puzzled me. Uh, for years and years, why a commercial district somewhere is only twenty miles an hour. But a residential where you got just as many little kids and stuff all over the place, as many access points. Uh, is twenty five, and given that five mile an hour over uh. The speed limit that is almost standard in everybody's mind, where you're going down the gorge at. Seventy, you know, instead of sixty five, thinking, well, I won't get a ticket or anything, that possibly that would help at twenty. Then if people are going twenty four to twenty five, it'd be a lot of stuff to change uh signs and all that, but. Um, wi- without being officially sworn in the meeting or something, that was something I wanted to catch now. In in case I probably slipped my mind, thank you, that's all.
Yay, Vicky Delacosa.
It doesn't really matter if myself or anybody else likes or supports what the decision was made tonight. Um, quite frankly, that's kind of what I expected from each one of you. But I did want to make. An observation that I think that maybe could help you guys going forward. And um, especially hearing that you guys just had a workshop and from what I understand. You weren't there because you weren't on the committee yet. But. And again, remember I told you I'm hard of hearing, so I think you made a motion. Sorry, you made the motion to. Go forward with dismantling everything, I'm going to paraphrase it, but, and I think that, John, you had said something about separating it. And I think then you were like, no, we don't need to, it's not necessary. Um, and then it got, there was a bunch of discussion back and forth, and then it gets brought back in. That kind of interaction, and then I am not positive, I think it was Jonathan. Um, somebody over here, and I think it was directed at Jerry. Called him out. About his personal feelings, was that you, John?
That was me.
Okay. That kind of thing in a public forum, when emotions are already high. Is tacky and unprofessional, considering, I'm assuming. That that was probably brought up in your guys' meeting, or not meeting, in your um. Little.
Goal setting session.
Goal setting session, that you guys probably discussed that. And and then, but for you to not recognize. That those are maybe his personal things, I don't know him from a hole in the wall, to be honest with you, and I don't know you from a hole in the wall. But it, when you come up here, probably the hardest part that you all have to do. Is set aside your personal feelings. And let's all acknowledge, we live in a society. And let's all acknowledge, we live in a society today that no longer requires us to do that. After all, look where we are now. It's inappropriate when you call out a council member because it immediately tells all of us and all of them out there listening that we can't have faith in you. But also, at the same time, what it's doing in what you guys are discussing, if I am correct, can I continue? That you guys are discussing the dismantling of a committee. We'll just call it the ABC Committee for the Color Blue. Doesn't matter what it is, it's irrelevant. There's biases, there's opinions and a disagreement. You need to show, unite, you do show a united front. Especially to everybody back here. And that is what somebody else had said previously, is you are not hearing the community. Now, whether you believe that or not really is the issue. And I really encourage you. You. I'm not sure how long you've lived too. You either. You either. You either. You either. I know you've been here for a chunk of time, but not as many as most of us.
Forty-five years is a long time.
Um, try fifty. So, I think your family's been here for a few generations. Um, I don't know about Peter. And Melanie, I know you and I've been here for too long, we don't need to know. Uh, anyway, my point is that while some of the people are out there losing their minds because they're passionate, just like you guys are. But when you say something like that, it's so invalidating to everybody else out here. It might feel good to you, but out here really so they're not here. They're not here for my traffic and safety committee. They're not here for my speed bumps. They're not here for the god awful way that my water tastes every morning in the bathroom. He's just here because he can't stand him. And he's just here because, well, I don't know, he doesn't like him. Guys, that's not okay. That is absolutely not okay. And I say this all day long, to little people. Maybe that's inappropriate. Little kids. Sorry, to little kids. If you have a beef with somebody, you're more than welcome to have that beef with them. You are not entitled to act on it. And you know what? You are sure as heck not entitled to act on it in public. Especially when you guys are in charge of laying down the ground rules that we have no choice but to live by. It's not okay. Not cool and not professional.
Thanks for the feedback. Hey, Jerry.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for council for a great meeting tonight. Lot of stuff. First of all, I have a little bit of tidbits for the, uh, um, uh, speed cushion stuff that I'd like to hand to Melanie later, just update information of going out. Uh, on Google Maps, they also have information where they take a, a level, which is a degree uh, level for slope, and they define the slopes in the different areas. Uh, the things on Oak Mill, Oakview, excuse me, uh, the road doesn't just descend at a slope. It goes at a higher peak and drops down and levels out. So strategically, in, when we look at this for the request for the neighborhood, is two separate cushions. The apex of a cushion usually on a cushion runs three and a half to three and three-quarter inches, over twenty-two feet. When your vehicle first begins to come up that, you notice that you're driving and you're starting to raise up. It's pretty simple. So over twenty-two feet, you re- in, you raise up less than four inches on an average. So the point being is, when you have a hill that's steep, you don't put a cushion on a steep hill. You start to come down, and as you level out, the vehicle comes, and that's when you are applied to a, a less acute grade. Because now you start to slow down, because momentum is in your vehicle. So positioning the cushions in the area is critical to get the things to work. Now, when we've looked at these other, uh, areas, even in Happy Valley, they do a lot of different stuff. They got eight-foot cushion with a six-and-a-half-inch rise. So you know what that does? You go up and you come down quick. That's not we're loo- what we're looking for up on Oakview. So we're looking for something that gets the message through and slows people down. So on that, on that road and traffic thing there, it's, it's, it's going to be strategically laid out. They run from fifty-five feet apart to a stop sign on the last cushion to up to three hundred feet. So distances of this stuff, you know, laid out is, is mechanical. Uh, anyway, that's what I wanna say, and I have the percentages here. With, this came off Google Maps, and it kinda tells us that they have already done the homework and reinvented the wheel on some of these places. So, uh, the other, I do have an other comment. I, I don't know if anybody brought this up tonight, but we're in Clackamas County. Clackamas County on February fifth made a decree that they dissolved DEI. It was a nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar budget. And they said, no more DEI. Now, we live in Clackamas County. And that means that we are in the jurisdiction of the county. So, uh, it really wasn't brought out. Uh, people that love to help people that have been, uh, you know, compassion is the heartbeat of, of caring for people. So when you're compassionate, that doesn't go away with a, a, a title above your head. It doesn't go away with an organization. In fact, an organization doesn't even produce anything without its people. So my statement tonight is, people that care about other people and wanna help them doesn't go away. The banner above your head has been tainted. DEI has been tainted. And everybody knows it. But the position of the heart condition, that should go forward. It really should, because that's, that's what our community is about. So I'll say this again, this was taken out on February fifth, twenty-twenty-four, disbanded in our, in our Clackamas County. So if we follow the setting of Clackamas County, we can follow that.
Uh, thank you. Do you have any online comments? Okay, we're
Mr. Mayor, one. So the, the state has given us a little bit more flexibility than we traditionally had on, uh, twenty mile an hour speed limits. Um, it's, it's based on the category of road. So I don't know if that road would qualify, but we can take a look at that and bring that back to the council. And I wa- I wanna say that, uh, a collector's not eligible, but, um, there are multiple local roads that are.
All right, great, thank you. All right, uh, Timmy, we'll get you back up here. I guess I missed your application, I'm sorry.
You did. So I told you guys that I would respect your decision, and I do. I don't have any, you know, I don't harbor feelings towards any of you. I, um, am sad that you didn't answer Jerry's question about the community engagement. Um, I have been on the committee, the DEI committee, long enough to know, and I, I, I have a weird thing. I watch you guys on YouTube. I watch your meetings, because I like to stay, you know, up on what you guys are doing, right? So I watch a lot of your meetings, and I know you're very, very busy with all kinds of things. All kinds of things. You do not have time to deal with community engagement. I also have watched the Parks and Rec and the Roads and Transportation Committee, whatever it's called. Um, uh, and I know that they deal with plenty of stuff too. So I would just like to know, where is the community engagement piece going to fit in? I don't see the library board doing it. Um, I don't see the DEC. They're plenty busy with all kinds of things. Um, and all the other commissions, budget, I mean, all of those committees and commissions. I don't see where, it's easy for you guys to say, well, we'll just fill it in. That's, that's code for, we won't really know how it's gonna work, but you know, we think that's how it's gonna work. So I would like to see, as a community member, I'd like to see some direction on that. And, and real answers, not just suppositions of where it might end up. Um, I have a really big passion for this community. Um, Carrie's probably gone, but I actually, every year, like I said, we, you know, we lead, um, various stuff that goes on, at least in Sandy. And we have a lot of people from Estacada that we help, but I would love to, I would love to lead something here. But a committee from the city, and, you know, I don't know what it would be called, maybe a communit- community committee of some sort. But i- if they can get money from the city, because they have budget, right? Then you, you can use that money to do things. Um, and it's easy to love people and be wanting to help them, but it's much easier to do that with money. Um, and it does take money to do free clinics. So, um, I would love to do more community, um, in, you know, engagement in helping our community with actually things that we can put the city name on and say, the city did this. You're coming today to get free dental care or vision care or whatever it is. You're here today because of your city and your commissioners. I mean, what better thing to do than to show your committee that you care, I mean, your community that you care? So, um, how could we hear back from you on that? I mean, how, how would we have any direction as a community on how you plan to move forward on that? That's my question. Thank you.
We are now at Mayor, Council Reports and Comments. I'll start off with you, Matthew, for it.
That was a lot to unpack. Um, I think we did the right thing. I think another committee will come up that will serve the purpose that DEI wanted to, without all the negativity that it has brought on through our country, so.
So it's a stormy night, both literally and figuratively. Um, I'm not naive. My default is to, uh, expect the best from everyone. And, um, you know, of course, I've seen bad behavior, um, and, and sometimes it's shocking. Uh, and it's, the, the examples given tonight were so egregious. It's, it's hard to imagine that kind of stuff still goes on, but don't think for a second that that means that I don't think it does, because you can read about that kind of stuff every day. Um, regarding, uh, reaching out to the community, um, I think during the workshop, uh, they talked about, um, reaching out to a, you know, a specific component of the community. Um, and I mentioned that, that you know, there's the possibility of, of, um, over-sampling uh, versus, uh, broader, um, ways of, of reaching the community, like my own committee experience with, uh, traffic public safety. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I imagine that certain committees are limited in their ability to reach out, but there are, um, there's, there's no way that there's only one committee that's got that responsibility. It's really the responsibility of all the committees. Um, it's, it's definitely a passionate topic. Um, I think that, uh, the decision tonight was a good one. You know, it's, it's the, the negative impact of DEI uh, at the federal level, uh, regarding funds is, I believe it's, it's true, and I think it's legitimate. And so if we go looking for, for funds for some of the things we wanna do around here in the next, at least the next two years, um, I think that's gonna be something that really matters. And so we've, we've already put on our table a mechanism to, uh, discuss other things to do regarding committees to reach out, or whatever that looks like. But, uh, um, I think we've done the right thing.
Yeah, I wanna say, uh, first of all, thank you to everybody that came out tonight. Um, I know it was a hot topic, and that's why there was a lot of you here, but truthfully, we do appreciate every single one of you being here. We say that every week, but that's the truth. Uh, there was a lot said tonight, right? Uh, a lot of comments from the public and stuff like that, a lot of assumptive comments, you know? Uh, I think we've been called fear mongers and a lot of other things with it, but I would encourage you, before you call somebody a fear monger, or you call somebody names, that you think about the tactic, the very tactic that you're employing when you do that. If you think that coming and yelling at people or calling them names is gonna pressure them into seeing your point of view, I would suggest that you take a communication class, because it doesn't work. Don't think for a second that we're not available, because we are. We sit up here and we ask you guys, please, tell us. We got members in this community and on this council that are on multiple committees that are in multiple venues in this city, whether it be in coaching, volunteering their time in that format as well, right?
Yep, yes, yes. Thank you for that, too. Thank you for that. Sincerely.
Right? So don't think for a second that we're not invested in this commi- community, excuse me. And please don't think for a second that we don't care about what you have to say, because that's just flat-knot truth. Unfortunately, sometimes we're gonna be at an impasse where things don't go the way the other half would like it to. And you know what? I wanna say that I'm sorry that you have to have those feelings that come with that of hurt, a heartache, and that you feel that we don't care because it didn't land the way you want it to. I'm sorry that that's how you feel, but that's just not simply true. We care about this community. We care about where it's headed. We care about the people that are in it. We care about how you eat. We care about where your kids go to school. We care about what sports they play, who their coaches are, who their teachers are, that the cops make sure that they're going slow enough so that your cats and your dogs and the kids on skateboards don't get hit. We very much care. Okay? We care so much, right, that we're up there fighting at the Capitol at different levels to try to turn on industry, to answer the questions and to, and to creatively solve the problems that are being dropped on us from the state level, like forced growth and the lack of infrastructure we have to support it, right? So as I see news cameras, thank you for coming here to highlight our community. We appreciate that. But instead of coming to highlight divisiveness and the divide in our community, please come and highlight the infrastructure needs that we have. Please come and highlight that this community is hurting, right? Please highlight this community has needs, and that we can't expect our tax base to be the only person that pays for this. Please highlight that to the governor.
Uh, I just wanna preface this by letting City Council know that I respect all of you as human beings. And I apologize if I break the quorum. Uh, I appreciate you letting me speak my mind here, and I hope we can work together productively. Uh, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, your voices, your concerns and your insights matter. I deeply appreciate everyone taking the time to share their thoughts, because true leadership is supposed to begin with listening and understanding. I share in the growing concern that we are not always hearing our constituency as we should, and we are supposed to be listening to all of our residents putting our biases at the door. With all due respect to members of council, I don't think that was done tonight. I do know things get heated, but we also, also should try and refrain from insulting members of our community, members that volunteer their time with the city. So, anyway, to get rid of this committee that has a pure mission because of three letters is insanity. I'm devastated for the members of the public that were encouraged by having this committee and the message that it sends to the public to remove it. We have a lot of work to We have a lot of work to do to build back the trust that was lost tonight. There were multiple speakers tonight from outside the community and I appreciate that. But I want to encourage everyone in our community to make comments and let us know how they're doing.
I thank everyone for coming out tonight. I wish that we had this kind of turnout on every city council meeting so that we got more feedback on. All of the decisions that we make. We deal with a lot, a lot of issues outside of a committee that are going to have a great impact on you as well. And so I just encourage people to come out. As often as you can to give us your feedback and your opinions on things that we're making decisions on. And I'd like to see the seats full at every meeting. It was really nice to see all the people here and be. Get a chance to express their opinion on things and give their feedback. And I just appreciate everyone taking the time to come out and. And those of you that sat through the whole meeting with us, I appreciate that. Thank you.
First off, I want to thank staff. Thank you for giving us an agenda. That gave us time to really discuss this controversial but very important subject. You know, I'm glad it wasn't, this agenda wasn't cluttered with a bunch of other stuff that would, would have taken away from this discussion. Thank you all for coming out, everybody. Great comments tonight. I'm going to ask our community to be civil. In person, on social media. Regarding this decision, please be civil during this transition time while we figure out what we're going to do. To meet our council goal of community engagement and accessibility. So just be civil. The decision was made. Let us figure out how we're going to move forward. Please just, you know, keep. Social media comments, like I said, civil. That's the only way I can put it. We don't need, we don't need to create more divisiveness. We don't need to create more drama. We just. Need to figure out how to move forward. With our city goals. We need to, you know, we need to figure out how we're going to come together so that we can accomplish that city goal that we have. So I appreciate all of you. And I appreciate all of you for the great discussion tonight. I, like I said, I mean, there's so much, there's so much said up here, stuff that I didn't know. You know, that makes me more, a more intelligent, better person. So thank you all.
Thank you.
For the record, me and Jerry do like each other. We may argue, but we do like each other.
All right. Well, I've got that out of the way. Think I'm going to bring in you, you into this next conversation on my comment. Don't take it the wrong way. It will be in, in a different, a different aspect, okay? We've known each other for quite a few years. I know you know that because I remember fighting for your house when it was right next to the Ford dealership. And you were getting overspray into your backyard because they weren't using the paint boost. Do you remember those days? All right. But I, I just, I just want to reflect on that timeframe during that fight. We, it was vicious. I mean, they were fighting us and we were fighting them to, to put those cars in the boost when they paint them and everything was going, you know? And some things were said that were heated at times during that conversations that we had over a period of time in City Council. But my point here. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I don't know about that part after the fact, but I'm just using this as an example to get to my point here. My point is. Yeah, you mentioned twenty-five years not being a very long time here. I've spent sixteen of that. In this seat. Yeah, in a city council seat and a mayor's seat. And I fought all the fights, but if I passed you on the street today, you probably wouldn't even acknowledge me. Because if you passed me on the street today, you probably wouldn't even acknowledge me. Because we don't see eye to eye on a lot of things, right? In, in general, because we don't have anything in common, right? Check it. Well, that sounds about right. But my point is, when you talk about the counselors up here, I'm very protective of these guys. And the reason I am is because they are human, every single one of them. And they have passion, a lot of it. That's probably why they were elected. They fight for this community. So I believe they have the intention in their hearts. I don't think, believe anything is malice between them. So what I'm trying to get at is. They deserve a little bit more respect. They're not just here holding a seat and their political ideas are all they're after. They've got heart. They've got soul. I've talked to each one of them. And mind you, my, my examples might be different the way I think. But. They all like each other. They all get along and they all talk. So to say that they disrespect each other or that to the public, they're disrespectful, they're passionate. There's a difference between disrespectful and passionate. Passionate just means. Passionate just means that you are strong feeling on a subject that you're trying to get across. Mind you, they don't always have the right way of putting it across. They don't. But that's what makes them human. And that's why you put them here. So when you talk about them, have some respect for these people. I sure as heck do. I don't sleep anymore. Because I'm so worried about this town's direction. I stopped sleeping. I stopped everything to make sure that I would be here for this city. So I'm very passionate about the direction it goes in and D E I does not work for other reasons. But it will get better and we will find a way. And I want to meet with you and figure out how we can do that. But. This is not a time to speak. I'm just giving my comment. I'm just giving my comment. Okay, all right. So I just would ask that you please give these counselors. Whichever counselor it is, the respect they deserve for the job they do. Because they've earned it. They've earned it. You elect them. At the end of the day, you've elected every one of these people. Maybe not you personally, but the community did. So they had trust there. So give them that respect, please. That's all I ask of you. And I just wanted to make the example to say that we used to work hand in hand. And we never fought and we never hated each other, right? We never did. But this community, over time, has developed a separation due to the political climate or whatever it is. And I'd like to see you get back to the community that I came to, that I volunteered in, that I was a part of, and it can. But we got to start. We've got to start now. No matter what the decisions are, no matter what the subject is, we've got to get back to that. That's it for my rant and rave, but I thank all of you tonight. It was a great turnout. I thank city staff and everybody. And I thank all of you out there for keeping it. Semi-controlled. There was a few, but all in all, you guys were great. And thank you again for everybody and good night and happy week. Thanks.